Administer the oath of office to Pam Thompson, Elizabeth Carter, and Ed Dennison. And I'll just let you all.
Line up.
Glad to have Ms. Hicks with us today. And we'll just turn it over to you.
One at a time.
Yep.
Do you, Pam Thompson, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? And you, Pam Thompson, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and very true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Do you, Pam Thompson, swear that you will well and truly execute the duty of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education, according to the best of your skill and ability, and according to law, so help you God?
Yes.
Libby, it's you, you're on. Why don't you stand in front of the Moore County school thing so I have some background?
Good thinking.
Do you, Elizabeth Carter, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you, Elizabeth Carter, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and very true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Do you, Elizabeth Carter, swear that you will well and truly execute the duty of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education, according to the best of your skill and ability, and according to law, so help you God?
Got to sign it.
Red on red.
Black.
Do you, Ed Dennison, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Ed Dennison, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and very true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Ed Dennison, swear that you will well and truly execute the duty of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education, according to the best of your skill and ability, and according to law, so help you God?
I do.
We need to have a group shot of the new board. So everybody, when you're done signing, everybody up in front of the seal. This is a group, the.
Official board, the official board shot.
And we're going to put you on the other end.
It's a good school board.
Nicely drawn.
All right, smiles. One, two, three. All right, looks good.
Some like stuff, I was so used to like spreading out. Yeah.
All right.
He likes that.
It's my pleasure to open once again this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. As I have in the past, this is the one meeting that I open with the gavel, that's why the two extra knocks on the table. And it will be my pleasure to walk the board through the election of its chair. Before we do that, though, I would like to ask for a motion from a board member to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison, thank you for that second, Dr. Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the agenda is approved. At this time, I would like Ms. Thompson to engage in her third act. She has had the oath administered to her, she has approved the agenda, and in her third official act as a school board member, I'd like you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Be going to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is much for which we might reflect during our moment of silence. In particular, I would like to ask that we reflect on the lives of Captain Andrew Patrick Ross and Sergeant First Class Eric Michael Edmund, who lost their lives defending our freedom in Afghanistan this past week, and who both lived locally. I also would like us to remember Air Force Staff Sergeant Elkin from Pennsylvania, who was in the same vehicle with them at that time. I'd also like us to keep in mind our Gold Star families whenever these events occur. It is very often for many of our families and our children in those families, a time when they remember their own grief from previous losses. And then also, I'd like us to reflect on the life and many contributions of former President George H.W. Bush, if you would. If you'll join me in a moment, silence please. Thank you. The organizational meeting of the Moore County Board of Education is now called to order, we have a quorum present, and the purpose of this particular meeting is the election of board officers. The first order of business is election of the chair. As a reminder, nominations do not require a second. Do I hear a nomination for the office of board chair?
I have a nomination.
Yes, Dr. Brown.
I would like to nominate Helena Wallen-Miller, who we found to be supportive, energetic, well-organized, and above all, caring for our students, our schools, and our community. She maintains open communication with our board, the Moore County Commissioners, and the community. She encourages the board's participation in the schools and community, and includes community members to join in activities as they are able. Her support and encouragement continue to foster each board member as individuals and as a group. It is because of this motivation and inspiration that I gladly nominate Helena Wallen-Miller as our Board of Education Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare that the nominations are closed.
Mr. Chair, I move that the nomination be Helena Wallen-Miller be chair by acclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison, is there a second to Mr. Dennison's nomination?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the nomination of Helena Wallen-Miller as chair by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Helena Wallen-Miller is elected as chair, I will now pass the gavel to the chair.
I might ask for some tissues, thank you very much, Dr. Brown, that was very gracious and kind of you, thank you. And I look forward to another productive and successful year with our community and with the Moore County schools, so thank you. At this time, my first duty this year is to conduct the business of the election of the vice chair. And as a reminder, when we get nominations for a vice chair, we do not need a second. Do I hear a nomination for the office of vice chair?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Libby Carter for the position of vice chair. I think with the tag team efforts that both you and Libby have shown with passing of the bond and with the get out to vote for sales tax and your collaboration that you've had through the year with the Commissioners and the community, I think that both your partnership and your tag team, we need to keep both of you in place, so I make a motion for Libby Carter.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to recommend that we accept Libby Carter as vice chair by acclamation.
I'll gladly second that.
So a motion has been made and has been seconded to accept the nomination of Libby Carter for vice chair by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote carries.
Congratulations. And now she cries.
More than one tear.
Thank you all, and we have a long agenda for today, so the first item is, well, we need to do the board chair signatures.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I might? Given that you have been re-elected, there is no need for a new signature stamp for the new board chair, and the next action item that's on the agenda is not necessary. So I would suggest that a motion not be made on this item, and that we move on to Section Five, Item A on the agenda.
That sounds very efficient.
Do we need to table that or anything?
No, it's fine, as long as no motion is made, we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
All right, well, I want to thank Susan Hicks, our Register of Deeds, for being here today, and, or Registrar, I'm sorry, for being here today and administering the oath of office. Court of court. Thank you for being here.
And we're also grateful that our legal counsel has been present.
So glad I could talk.
Thank you, Neil. And I want to thank the families that were here in support of the oath of office today, and they've already left. All right, Dr. Grimacy, we have our first item for discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Bundy for his preliminary analysis of factors impacting budget development for the coming year. Mr. Bundy.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, congratulations on new appointments, and for our board and returning board, and the new board member, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do is just open up with our preliminary analysis related to our budget, kind of a recurring theme this time of year, and then we'll bring other items forward as the months progress. First item is, I need that clicker. And what we'll look at is just some positions related to our state and local funding, related to our full-time equivalents, looking at state funds, local funds, and then some comparison with other districts, and some comparison with county information from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. What you'll see on the next slide is just a breakdown between the funding that we get between primarily state, local, and federal, but you'll see by far, kind of the yellow part of the pie is seventy-two point two million of state revenue from last year, seventeen, eighteen, last year was a seventy-two million, which represents about sixty percent of our overall total revenue. And then you'll see the red color is thirty-one point five million, that is our local funds, which represents around twenty-six million, I mean twenty-six percent of our total budget. So between state and local, that's about eighty-six percent of our overall operating budget each year, so a big portion of that is just state and local dollars. Some smaller pieces relate to federal funding, then capital, child nutrition, and then our grants is around two million dollars. So overall, a hundred and twenty-one million in revenue last year. Next just looks at how the employees rank similar to our state fund, the pie looks very similar between the first, between the revenue one and this one, you'll see that our, by far, our state, with our state dollar, we employ the majority of our full-time staff. You'll notice that the state funds relate to principals, assistant principals, custodians, bus drivers, a lot of, most of our teachers, and some central office are located in the state allocation. Also, you'll see in local funds, we have assistant principals, maintenance, some teachers, IT technicians, and then central office. Then you have other positions such as federal funds, looks at instructional coaches and some teachers, child nutrition is primarily our school service staff. See, overall, you'll see the percentages on the right-hand side, there's around fifteen-hundred full-time employees, total employees is around a little over eighteen-hundred if you consider the part-time staff. And you see the breakdown, again, the lion's share is state and local funding related to our staff, around eighty, seventy-nine percent are state employees, and then around twelve percent are local employees. When you start bringing the focus into just local funds, when you look at local funds, the expenditures last year were thirty point two million, and you break that down between payroll and non-payroll, payroll accounts for about seventy percent of the cost in local funds, twenty-one point one million is related to payroll, salary and benefits for our locally paid employees. So seventy percent of that is payroll, and then the other percent, the nine point one million, represents thirty percent, which is for all the other services that are provided with local dollars. So by far, it's, a school system is traditionally, salary and benefits are majority of the costs related to most school districts, and we're no different. When you take that nine point one million, and you try to break it down into what the other costs are, other than payroll, you start looking at things such as professional services, contract services, workshops, the yellow relates to property services, electrical, gas, water, sewer, waste management, the green shade relates to school supplies, textbooks, computer software, a part of our budget for local goes to charter costs, charter schools, and then kind of the bluish color relates to operational supplies, including fuel for schools, repairs and maintenance. So you'll see that a lot of these items are related to non-payroll items, but a lot of them are also fixed costs, because you have utilities and needs at the school that are fixed in nature. So a lot of your costs are allocated between payroll and benefits and fixed costs related to our operations with our local funds. The next slide just kind of takes a look at just our full-time equivalents, and kind of what is that breakdown between state and locally funded positions? And you'll notice that the first one is assistant principals, we have around twenty-eight assistant principals, ten of them are paid with federal, state dollars, and then eighteen are paid with local funds. Teachers, there are five hundred and seventy-nine positions in what I call state OO1, which is your primary funding source for state teachers. Local funds are seventy-nine point two, on the executive summary, refers to seventy-eight positions, but I'm including, if you see to the right, J O R T C teachers are included in that total, so seventy-five plus the three gives you seventy-eight.
Right, and Mike, previously you misspoke and said seventy-nine point two, so you now have corrected it, for the record.
Yeah, seventy-eight.
Seventy-five point two plus three, right.
Yeah, plus three.
And remind us what that number was last year for local.
That number last year, we had a total between both groups, we had ninety-five locally paid teachers last year, so your difference in the number between last year and this year is a reduction of sixteen positions.
Thank you.
So this year is seventy-eight point two between the teachers in OO1 plus the three J O R T C teachers.
And the reduction was because of just the budget, for budget purposes?
Yeah, last year's budget, we reduced our budget due to factors related to our funding from the state, those positions were reduced from last year to this year, that's correct, Ms. Thompson. You'll see just other positions, I noticed that in maintenance, there are no state employees, they're all funded with local dollars. You'll also notice IT technicians, there's no state employees, those are all funded with local dollars as well. Instructional support, you have fifty-seven point six, those are a combination of, such as speak, psychologists, guidance, social workers, there's a lot that are kind of mixed in that group. Non-certified, what is that? You have twelve for state, those are our driver's ed teachers that are funded with state dollar, and then the six of local are three athletic directors and three athletic trainers are the six in your local funds.
If I could, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Going back to Ms. Thompson's question, there were reductions in state funding, but that was related to the class size reduction initiative, but also, over time, when we suffered reductions in state funding, we had a fund balance to cover that. And last year was the last year that we engaged in cost reductions in order to wean ourselves off of dependence on fund balance. So we had two different factors that were part of a perfect storm last year. One was the shift of state dollars that were available K through twelve that had to be specific to K through three, and number two was that we couldn't cover that with a fund balance anymore. And so there were actually fifteen positions that were shown in the budget, it ended up being sixteen at this point, but that's a matter of the math, rounding over time.
Yes, sir.
That occurred with the FTEs, okay. Does that help, Ms. Thompson? Yeah.
On this particular slide, you've got the asterisk there that says that the chart doesn't include all state positions.
That's correct. There are other positions in there that don't really relate to, when you look at state and local, the combination, like there's some.
Gotcha, okay.
Positions that are all state funded, for example, so.
We don't have to add to that.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can provide a separate report on that.
Yes, sir.
In a monthly update or at another work session in the future.
Yes, sir. The next slide just looks at what the ranking is in a per people expenditure, and I just picked some area, surrounding area districts, or related districts about our size, and you'll see that, given the chart, Moore County is ranked eighty-seventh out of a hundred and fifteen school districts. Just to give you a comparison, in twenty-seventeen, we were ranked eighty-eight, in twenty-sixteen, we were ranked eighty-five, and in twenty-fifteen, we were ranked ninety. So we've been around the eighty-five to ninety range for the past four years, so the trend kind of continues. You notice that there are other districts around with various rankings, just to give you some idea of how we rank compared to our neighbor.
Mike, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
This is just for, this does not include any building funds or anything, any capital funds for them.
That's correct.
So, and I can understand the low wealth states or low wealth counties receiving more money for that, but as far as everything else goes, we have to do exactly what they have to do, yet they're receiving more money for it, and I've got to figure out why.
Yeah, some districts get different funding streams than we do due to their.
Small size, low wealth.
Their low wealth, their ranking with the state, for example, are they tier three, tier one, and so sometimes that provides a dis. And so sometimes that provides additional funding that Moore County doesn't specifically qualify for. So that is some of the factors that are in this chart.
Well, I know, but my point is that we all have to do the same thing with our students, yet some of these counties are getting much more than we are to accomplish the same thing. Doesn't matter whether they're low-wealth or tier-one or whatever, because we're not talking about capital expense. We're talking about strictly personal. Okay.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Do you have the state average here?
No, but I can be glad to provide that to the board.
I know last year we were, if I remember, we were about six-hundred dollars less in the state average. And when you look at the total number.
Yes, ma'am. The state is not, is somewhere in the eightieth range as well, on average. I'd be glad to provide that to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Bundy, how long has the tier system been in effect? Do you know?
I don't know. It's been here, I'm not sure how long it goes, how far it goes back. I mean, Moore County's been a tier-three for many, many years, and that does relate to some of the funding that's available between tier-one and tier-two.
I just wondered if our General Assembly ever considered reevaluating the counties as they are placed on those tiers.
Are there any others in this list, in our surrounding area, that are tier-three schools in this list? Or do you know?
Chatham. Chatham, and I'm not sure about Brunswick.
Brunswick is, if you give me just a second. I know Chatham, Brunswick. Henderson, I think, is.
Maybe Henderson. That would be about the only three-hour thing.
Thank you. I was just curious, because in looking at that, then, I mean, Henderson's doing about the same as we are, and so is Chatham.
Well, Cumberland, I'm sure, is a tier-three too, and they're getting less than we are.
Well, when you look at Chatham and Brunswick, they're getting more than we are.
Cumberland is not tier-three.
No, it's not tier-three. It's a tier-two.
Henderson and Brunswick are about the same relative size as us, as far as ADM, and they have about the same number of schools. So it's a good comparison between us and Henderson and Brunswick as far as apples to apples.
Okay.
So that's, we look at those a lot, just see how we compare to those districts and the relative relationship between us and those two.
And they are all getting more state funding per-people expenditure than we are.
Thank you.
Well, just one other question, just for information. What poor school system has to be number one-hundred-and-fifteen on this list?
Actually, you can find that.
I printed out that whole, is it on there somewhere?
It's an attachment to the executive summary.
Yeah, I printed that out.
That would be.
Orfield's one-hundred-and-twelve.
Lincoln County is one-hundred-and-fifteen.
Go to the executive summary, the attachments. Catherine, please.
Edmond Nor College there? Lincoln County, that's Gastonia, isn't it?
Oh, and actually the.
No, that's Catherine County.
Okay.
Per-people, the second one. What you have as an attachment is the entire ranking for the state. You might have to make it a little bigger.
And I just saw with the total, it's nine-four-seven-eight. Nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-eight is the average per-people expenditure for the whole state, and we are at nine-three-five-two.
Lincoln County is ranked one-hundred-and-fifteen of all the school districts.
Thank you for this information. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike.
Attachments were helpful.
The other attachment we have is just a report from the county commissioners. Just shows the ranking with the tax base and tax charts as an informational item that the board can review and follow up with any questions you have.
And this is somewhat of a kickoff for the budget development process, but it's also going to inform your discussions about your legislative priorities. We try to get this out to you for those two reasons.
We already know that.
One, frames a budget discussion, but also the development of your advocacy points.
Mike, I have a question. You said seventy percent of the local funds are for personnel salaries and benefits. What is district-wide salary and benefit percentage? It's got to be in the mid-eighties?
Yeah, it's probably a little higher than that, but because a lot of your state funds are all, a lot of your state funds are payroll. So if you look at district-wide for all the funds, you are up in the mid-eighties as far as salary and benefits for our employees, because again, our system is to meet the needs of students, and that requires teachers and employees to do that. So we're very heavy as far as our payroll costs.
I'd just like to point out that by statute, the General Assembly is responsible for these expenses, not local. Local's responsible for capital. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Fall forward. Board members, this presentation also recognizes the beginning of your formulation of your legislative agenda. And this is a topic that the staff has identified as perhaps our highest priority legislative in terms of most immediate need. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Metcalf, if that.
That is correct.
In our discussion. So it would be our hope that you would give careful attention to this information as you formulate your legislative priorities. Dr. Metcalf?
Been working on it six months already.
I know you are, for the record.
Good afternoon, doctors. We're going to see Madam Chair, and welcome, Ms. Thompson. Lovely to see you there. In September of each year, our school is given a school performance grade that is based on the previous year's test scores. I'd like to share with you a change in how these school performance grades are calculated that will have impact on the grades given in September of twenty-twenty, September twenty-twenty, not this coming September, but the following one. Kate's going to describe how these grades are calculated and what exactly is going to change.
Okay. So general statute one-fifteen C eighty-three-point-one-five requires that school performance grades are calculated based off of school achievement being eighty percent and growth twenty percent. That same statute also says that this should be converted into a score on a hundred-point scale where, using a ten-point conversion, where a ninety to a hundred is an A, and eighty to an eighty-nine is a B. However, there is a session law, two-sixteen-dash-ninety-four, section eight-point-one-nine, which for the two-thousand-sixteen-seventeen, seventeen-eighteen, and eighteen-nineteen school years converts that hundred-point scale to a fifteen-point conversion as opposed to a ten-letter conversion, which means an eighty-five to a one-hundred would be an A. This session law, which temporarily waives that ten-point conversion, is set to expire at the end of this school year to be affected for the nineteen-twenty school year. This change from the fifteen-point scale to a ten-point scale will have a negative impact on Moore County Schools' published school performance grades for nineteen-twenty and the years beyond.
So as Kate noted, the session law is set to expire after the nineteen-twenty school year. And when it happens, it'll have a detrimental effect on the Moore County Schools' published school performance grades, beginning with those that we receive in September of twenty-twenty. We wanted to share what some of that impact would be if we scored exactly the same in nineteen-twenty as we did this past year in seventeen-eighteen. We'd go from nine B schools to three. We'd go from eight schools who received a C grade to six. We'd go from three schools that received a D score to seven, and we had no failing schools this year. We would have four with that change. In addition, we need to be reminded that schools are designated as low-performing if they have a D or an F in a school growth score of met expected growth or not meeting expected growth. This past year, we had just two low-performing schools, but based on the session law expiring, we scored exactly the same as we did in twenty-seventeen-eighteen. In twenty-nineteen-twenty, we would have nine low-performing schools, nine schools that would be going through that very strenuous process. So a lot of detrimental impact, we believe, in a lot of different ways. It definitely, necessarily, brands our schools in a very negative light. The metrics hide the growth and progress of our students are making. Makes it very difficult for the community to compare the progress of the schools over a course of numbers of years, because you've changed the criteria. It does not, in any way, change the work and the actual performance of our students. So as Mr. Dennison noted, we're working very strenuously to try to make sure this does not expire.
I think it's very detrimental, because the military look at that, and as they go online and they see what letter grade each school has, and they question that. So not even them knowing the percentage scale has changed too. So I think that's going to look huge next year if they're looking online for that.
And as a reminder, when you're talking about these performance grades, it is all based on one test at the end of the year, correct? That three, third, fourth, and fifth graders, children, are sitting for three hours taking an exam. And that's just for those little ones. The older ones do it too, but I will tell you, for my little one having to take it, it was not easy. When you look at our, what other impacts this may have in terms of on-staff morale, what are your thoughts on that?
I can, if I might.
Yes, please.
This topic was central to all twenty-three of my meetings this fall. I've still got three or four left. So actually, I've had about eighteen or nineteen meetings with faculties this fall. Devastating effect. Devastating effect. Our teachers are working very hard. They're working very smart. The metrics are so expansive and so complicated that it is very difficult for teachers and principals to keep up with exactly what it is they're supposed to do relative to these tests. There is not very much accountability on the test, because the tests don't have to be released to the public in any sort of timely way. There is limited item analysis available for teachers compared to other states. And so in many ways, our teachers and principals are very handicapped by the system. And so for anyone to assume that our teachers might work harder or work smarter, or our principals might work harder or work smarter as a result to a papering over of the grading system that makes all of the schools look worse, even though nothing really has changed in what the teachers are doing, I have observed it causing great disappointment and, in some cases, anger on the part of our teachers. And they're looking to me, and they're looking to us, to help somehow communicate to our legislators that this is absolutely unnecessary in order to improve the learning outcomes of our children. And indeed, it is counterproductive to improving the learning outcomes of our children. So that is coming from my firsthand experience in what amounts to be so far about eighteen or nineteen out of twenty-three meetings with teachers in Moore County. I don't need to rely on anybody else for that. I've seen it with my own eyes.
I would like to point out, we're talking about Moore County, but most of the people are going to be worse off than we are when this happens. So it won't be that we fall in sadness with what's happening in the state. Everybody will just, it'll be a disaster for everyone. So, you know, other schools are, it's going to be, are going to be worse off than we are. And it's going to be a disaster for us, so you can imagine.
Mr. Dennison, if I could add, I just came from the annual state superintendent's winter conference. This is the number-one priority for the State Principals Association, the North Carolina Association of School Administrators, the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association. And what everybody would like to do is have a more in-depth conversation about why academic growth counts only twenty percent. But the message we've gotten is that our General Assembly doesn't even want to hear about that. So we won't hear about that. But then why must we then, in mid-course, change the grading scale and sort of disrupt all the longitudinal comparison we have with years previous? It is the number-one priority of all of the school administrator associations. And perhaps you could report on school association, but Madam Chair, I yield.
Well, I would also wonder if our business associations would find this important, because if the state or individual counties then have difficulty in recruiting businesses to come in, how in the world can we get an Amazon if the average school scores on these performance grades are much lower than they were before? And I'm not saying we need an Amazon, but what I'm saying is that this has to be important for the state as a whole in terms of our economic viability. So to me, it's not just a school board issue. It's also a lot of our businesses and others within the state.
I'd like to point out too, that this will not cost them any money. This won't cost them any money. Growth won't cost them any, the growth won't cost them any money. There are things that we can get done that we're not asking for a cent to have them do it.
So, Mr. Dennison, is it being approached as a two-part method, one that we want to continue on with the ten-point scale being marketed in one way, and then the concept of looking at performance and growth as a different change?
Oh, sure. They're different. They're different bills.
But we'd want to stay with the fifteen-point scale, not the ten-point scale.
Right. Yeah, but they're different.
And do we know, is this a priority for our state school board association?
Yes.
And are they lobbying on everyone's behalf?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just asked for a copy of the approved one that we approved at the meeting, so I'll have that available. I'll send that out to everyone. We got that today.
I have one more question, Dr. Metcalf. Is this in the state? Do you know if this is in the state ESAP plan?
It is not a part of the state ESAP plan.
So it's not that we have another hurdle to go up against. It's really.
This is not a federal initiative.
Okay.
Yeah, letter grades are not required by the Every Student Succeeds Act from the federal government. North Carolina uses letter grades because North Carolina's application to the federal government said that we would use letter grades, and that's because our General Assembly said that we would use letter grades. But there are other states, including Virginia, that do not use letter grades to label schools.
Thank you for sharing all this information.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We'll move into our pending action items. At this time, we'll direct your attention to a proposed calendar of meetings for the next eighteen months. Obviously, the next twelve months are the ones that apply most directly, but we like to go out eighteen months for long-range planning purposes, with those back six months being available for revision this time next year when the board convenes. So what I would like to note on this is the attention that we've given to the month of July in particular. I'd like you, as board members, to evaluate the staff's suggestion that you consider meeting on the Monday after July fourth week. Last year, we met two Mondays after July fourth week. But the feeling in just some preliminary inquiries with board and with staff is it would be nice to, we think that if we really keep that agenda light, that we can get that meeting done on that Monday and then free up those last couple of weeks of July. So we offer that. And the alternative would be to conduct that one July meeting a week later, but last year, we found that seemed to be more disruptive. So it really is incumbent upon the staff to be ready for the July eighth meeting with everybody's vacations and whatnot. So we offer that. And then, Sonya, you're going to have to help me. I'm drawing a blank on that second one that we, oh. Oh, it ended up not being an issue. Previously, we have worked around the NCSBA convention in November, but NCSBA has now moved the convention back a week. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it will not conflict.
And so it no longer interferes with Veterans Day. And so with that, we're able to conduct the work session and the board meeting in November, in November, whereas the last couple of years, we've had to conduct the work session on the last Monday in October. And Sonya, correct me. I'm sorry, I had notes on a sheet, and I don't have them here. Are there any other changes that we made in the calendar that?
No, not at this time.
I will note the times. We looked over the past year, and we had a start time for work sessions as four o'clock. We're not sure that we ever started a meeting at four o'clock in the past year. And so we thought we'd just go ahead and set it at three and set that as our pattern. Now that we have Ms. Thompson, and she's got regular working hours, in addition to some other board members that were, we now have another board member who actually has to work a full day, we're going to try to be, we're going to be looking at ways to mitigate the number of one and two o'clock starts we have. And so with that, we've gone ahead and offered, suggested to the board that you consider institutionalizing a five o'clock start for closed session, and that with the mix of, you know, eating and meeting at the same time, just sort of multitask a little bit. It seems to have worked the last couple of months. And so we've, on this calendar, we're showing institutionalizing a five o'clock start. We might get away with five-thirty in. Uh, we might get away with 5:30 in, in many months. But we thought if we just did 5:00, uh, the one hour of combination closed session business would allow you some breathing time somewhere between 6:00 and 6:00, your 6:30 start to mingle with people that are arriving, maybe have some relaxation time. But the other, the alternative would be 5:30, uh, if you wanted to do that. We could, we could go with that. I will tell you that, uh, next Monday, we need to start, um, no later than 5:00. We, we have a very heavy, um, closed session agenda, uh, for next week. And we're, we're gonna need every bit of, uh, 90 minutes, I think. An hour and 15 to an hour and 20 minutes for that.
And this is to alleviate having two closed sessions? Because we always had one at the end of the meeting, and that was a little tiring, so I appreciate having that early on.
Alleviate the closed session. Also alleviate the number of times where we come rushing out a closed session and we come running into the meeting and we can't even say hello to people that are here. Uh, I think there's some value in having 10 or 15 minutes in between the sessions with that. And I'm basing that on your experience these last two or three months. It seems to have been very positive. The other thing that's very positive that doesn't show up in the calendar is, um, this notion of having a mini work session in the afternoon before the regular board meeting where instead of starting at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, the work, the regular work session, take that hour or two of work and, and put it before the 5:00 start of the regular meeting and have two, 3:00 starts instead of a 1:00 start and a 5:00 start. Yeah, that, that seems to, that's worked well too, these last couple of months.
The October 7th date needs to be changed from 2:00 to 3:00 in the, in the calendar.
You have a typo there? Yes, we do.
Yeah, it's a typo. Not a big deal.
Board members, if you'll note, that is a typo. October 7th should be 3:00. Let me just look around, staff members. I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything. Kinda awkward for me to do it that way, but can anybody see anything that we missed here? I thought we had it nailed down pretty well, but I didn't scribble down my notes here.
October 7th, I don't believe it's a typo, Dr. Grammacy. That's intentional because of the school improvement plan. We'll have half of our school improvement plans.
Forgive me.
We need a little earlier start.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Locklear. Now, I'm glad we did that. That is not a typo. I stand corrected. Mr. Dennison, that is when we do all our...
Good, good. Well, I thought there was a reason.
Well, we'll do half of our school improvement plans, but nevertheless, we still need to start early to get the half of them in.
Goodness.
The only other question I had was about March 11th.
Yes, ma'am. March 11th, uh, the chair alerted us to the fact that we'll be conducting the budget hearing on March 11th, which is a teacher workday. Which normally would not be a problem for a school board meeting, but we're, if, to have the budget hearing that night, normally without everyone being in school that day, there, there, you may have some hesitation. Frankly, I'm not that concerned about that. If, if it was a regular holiday, absolutely, we'd have to reschedule it. But I think on a teacher workday, um, I, I, especially in, in March, I don't anticipate a lot of people being out of town the first 11 days of March, the way they might be at other times of the year.
Well, it's, it's not spring break, which I think is good that it's not on that date. And I know we moved it from that.
Well, let, if we might, Madam Chair, if you could, board members, um, the chair has noted that, uh, that's a teacher workday that day. Does anybody, um, share the concern that, that we should not have a budget hearing that night? Anybody else share that concern? Okay, staff, feelings among staff members, it's senior staff today, meeting today when we talked about this was that we, if the, if the board really felt that was a problem, we'd, we'd make the adjustment. But if you go the next night, you got the superv, uh, excuse me, commissioners meeting. And so moving it is...
That's fine.
Whenever you move a meeting, that creates its own set of difficulties with scheduling. So we offer that, Madam Chair. Any other questions or feedback? Anything you want us to adjust between now and the time you act on this next week? Thank you all very much. Madam Chair, with your permission?
Yes.
At this time, I'll invite Mr. Barath forward. And Mr. Barath, uh, we will just let him sort of roll with, um, B, C, D, E, and F. And then if he has to leave early, we'll give him...
I feel like I'm on Sesame Street.
C is for cookie. It's good enough for me. But we, we also have an item on the commissioner's agenda tonight that Mr. Barath is, and, and I are gonna be present for where the commissioners will be considering funding for the, um, site development at the new Southern Pines Elementary, which I'm sure you'll give us some details on. But we, if he has to get up and leave early, we, John, there's nothing else on the agenda after these items for you. So, um, we'll give you the freedom to, to do that. Okay, B, C, D, E, and F, you're on, Mr. Barath.
Thank you. Pam, welcome. Good seeing you.
Thank you so much.
Everybody, good evening. Good seeing you all. This is an exciting time. Before I even begin, um, I did succeed in picking one of the colder days of the month for the Aberdeen groundbreaking. It was wonderful. I'm glad those were able to attend. Those that couldn't, I hope you had the opportunity to see it online. But what a beautiful day that was, exciting. So, uh, going back to, uh, the new school on Camp Easter Road, uh, what you have before your first item is a roadway development agreement. As you recall, back in June 2017, when you approved the purchase of land from Knollwood Partners LLC, at that time, we also executed a development agreement for water and sewer, which has recently been bid out and is under construction. One of the unknowns at that time was roadway improvements on Camp Easter Road. So, uh, after working with the town of Southern Pines and NC DOT and our engineers, the requirements of what needs to happen to, uh, Camp Easter Road has been defined. Engineers have worked on it. We've been working, uh, together to take a look at how we can best implement the steps that need to be taken. The school has a requirement of turn lanes to be put on Camp Easter Road right in front of where Pope John Paul II school is at their entry drive to the west. However, with the adjacent 130 home development, that triggered the need for a roundabout. So the school's responsibility is to build, uh, turn lanes and the developer would then build a roundabout. It did not make sense to anybody involved at that time, including NC DOT, for us to build the turn lanes and within a few weeks to months to have the developer tear it all up and build a roundabout. So, uh, working together with everybody, including, uh, our consultants, uh, legal counsel at Farrington Smith, we put together this development agreement that the school's responsible for $460,000 of the roundabout construction, which would be the cost of putting in the turn lanes. And the developer responsible for a balance of $445,500, which would be the difference to put in the roundabout estimated at $905,500. I wanna remind you that, uh, legislation adopted a year and a half ago puts the, uh, responsibility on NC DOT to reimburse the schools for any roadway improvements required, uh, when a new school is constructed or additions are made. So we will recover back at the end of the project, once all the improvements are completed and accepted by NC DOT, we receive back the $460,000. Uh, these funds will be paid initially out of the funding strategy the county has executed through local borrowing and then reimbursed at the end of the project back to the county in that fund. So, uh, at this time, tasked is the development agreement. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
And, and Mr. Barath, if I might add, uh, the development agreement includes a, an aerial view of, of the roundabout. If you would, bring that to everybody's attention. Right at the very end, John. Second to last page, John.
I didn't go far enough then.
We don't do short agreements.
Uh, keep going, keep going. Keep going. There it is. There it is, right there.
So where exactly is that locate? I mean, I couldn't figure out where that was.
Right now, if you were to drive out there to the top of the roundabout diagram, that is the west entry to John Paul II school.
The, the new entry.
That's existing entry.
Existing.
They, they have two entry points to their school. They have an east and a west entry point on Camp Easter Road. This would be the one on the west. If you were to look to the south down on the sheet, if you're coming across Camp Easter Road, our school is off to the right there. You can see the lines of the entry drive and exit drives, uh, on the bottom right of that drawing. And you can see now the cleared right-of-way all the way down there for where that new road would come that would serve our school. So when you're out there, it's that west entry point to John Paul II school. That is exactly the intersection of where the roundabout would be.
You cross through it before you actually get to the school?
Yeah, you go through the roundabout and enter the school.
On your way out from Southern Pines, you, you go past it and then you continue around the curve and you see the school.
Yes.
And we'll be able to have that ready before the school opens?
Yes.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is because they were going to put a roundabout on Midland Road and they couldn't get a bid in for pavers last, this past year. And so I'm wondering, are we gonna run into the same situation?
Catherine, if you could, keep going, Dr. Brown, please. Catherine, if you could scroll, uh, back into the document, no, the other direction. Up, yeah. You, you'll go back to the aerial view that shows the school and then we can get a better angle at the, keep going.
It's a real big sheet.
Yeah, it's the big sheet that, uh, keep going. You'll, it's the next map you come to. Right?
Right there.
Yeah, we can't make that smaller, John?
Yeah.
Here we go. And this way, you'll, you'll be able to get a, something you can point at, John. There you go. Okay, so...
So if you look on the left of that drawing,
Okay.
you see where the new road's coming off Camp Easter, Camp Easter's running left to right. The new road comes down and in to serve the new school. And to the, up from that new road, that is that west entry to John Paul II school. If you move further along the right, along Camp Easter Road, to where you can see the curve begins, we have our bus entry on the upper right. Just before all that, to the left, that is the second entry point to John Paul II school. So you can see relative to where the new building is being built when you drive by and how remote the roundabout really is from where the school is located. Lot of distance there. And to answer your question, we are at the mercy of bidders on every project.
The same.
So we just continue with our engineers to build up interest in this. This will include not, the project will not include just a roundabout. It'll include the roundabout and that little spine road. It'll also include the required, uh, turn lanes over on Fairway in NC 22, as well as on Camp Easter and Niagara Carthage.
That, that should help.
Expanding the scope to more. Hopefully attracts more bidders. And it'd be a timing issue then.
It'll be nice for the neighbors too, because people coming from the other area coming south, west, east. It's gonna cut down a little bit on traffic because people go 55 easily, more.
It should, it should have a moderating effect on speed.
Yes, that's what, and I think that'll be good for us in the school.
Yeah, I think ultimately it'll, uh, the, the concerns expressed by the McDeeds Creek residents last year, I'm hoping that we can deliver and, and some satisfaction on that.
And once we complete the final permitting of the designs, we will be, once we have the approvals for that, we will then be submitting to reduce the speed limit on Camp Easter Road to 45 from 55 and to declare school zone for 35 miles per hour.
Questions from board members. Madam Chair?
I have no further questions. Anyone else?
One, one question. Knollwood Partners, who will be reimbursing the school for our portion of the improvements, are they being required to hold money in escrow for this kind of payment?
We do not have them put in escrow. They just have a binding agreement. And if they are in violation of agreement, we may go through litigation to recover the costs.
And they reimburse, they reimburse us?
Don't want it to come to that, but it's a lot of money.
They reimburse the school district for that?
They pay us in intervals of 50% in completion.
That's right. Okay, thank you. I never remember. Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you.
I have a comment real quick. I drove, I drove by it the other day and it looks amazing. And, um, my daughter saw it and she goes, "Is that the new high school?" I'm like, "No, honey, that's an elementary school." So, so it's, it's, it's amazing.
Glass is being installed.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It is, uh, the, um, the earliest portions of the facility are really starting to get a finished look. Very nice. Looking forward to my monthly tour this Friday with, uh, Mr. Vest will be joining us this time. Mr. Barath, proceed with item C, please.
Item C, I've had Tim Locklear join us here for this one because together we have been working with the consultants and our advisory committee and the public forums and the board on this entire process for the assignment area for students of this new school. So as you will recall, that, uh, previously you have authorized us to post the proposed final layout, or recommended layout, pardon me. Uh, we have posted that on our website and in information. You've also, uh, approved us to open a web-based portal where people can provide feedback on the proposed solution. And we have completed that. And we, you authorized us to conduct the public hearing on the topic of the student assignment, which we completed in November 15th at Carthage Elementary School. You recall that night at Carthage Elementary School, there were two speakers that came, uh, to address the board. And they both spoke in support of the plan as presented. And they, uh, commented, uh, very, uh, positive about the next step to come and how the board recognized those challenging areas and wanted to be purposeful in moving families only once. And that's why step two would address those potential areas. The online portal was closed the end of business that same day. There were nine comments posted, uh, through that portal. Uh, those six were in support of the plan. And three comments requested the inclusion of the Whispering Pines, uh, extrajurisdictional, uh, area to be, or extraterritorial jurisdiction to be included in the assignment area. And that's a topic we have discussed at length with the board previously. At this point, uh, that is the information that we can provide to you that has been received as feedback regarding this. And Tim and I are here to answer any questions you may have and to receive any additional direction from the board prior to your meeting next week.
Are there any questions? I know, Ms. Thompson, you're, you're new, but I...
No, I actually was, um, was out at the open forum that you had in Carthage, which was very informative and, um, I, I think the due diligence that has been done to ensure that families and children only move one time, um, has just been great. And, and so I'm right here, I'm right there with you.
Excellent. Thank you. We're glad you can just jump right in.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
One, one question. Um, I know we, we are projecting numbers of children who are going to be moving, uh, or staying, as it might be. Any idea how many families are actually affected?
We haven't done it.
I, I know that's asking a whole lot of the...
That's a good question. I, Tim?
Haven't done that analysis, no, ma'am.
We just know the student numbers there.
I, I think...
Right, I know we know that, bit, those bigger numbers. And of course, those are subject to change all the time because you never know who'll move into the house next door. And, and the numbers can change very quickly, um, that way. But it just occurred to me, I wondered how many families have really paid close, how many households, yeah, have actually paid attention to this and, and will see the move.
You'll have siblings that are impacted, so that would...
A six-children household as opposed to the one child.
Right.
Well, I just wanna say thank you for, um, that this process has been very thorough and has included a lot of public input, so I appreciate all the work that you two have done and others to, to bring, um, transparency to this process, so thank you.
They get to do it again and again.
I know. What's a good model to build on?
We'll be back after turning the calendar.
We'll have a month off, won't we? Not much.
Just a couple weeks.
All right, next item.
And we'll invite, uh, Mr. Barath and Mr. Locklear to, um, also, um, present item D.
Thank you. And this is regarding now the next step, which would be naming the school. And so, uh, there's, in the executive summary gives a, a reminder just of the history that has gone through and, and into this development of naming the school. How we solicit the public for, and the board and others to provide recommendations, how we sorted through them and organized them and presented them to the board. And how we got down to a recommended shortlist of five potential names for the school consisting of McDeeds Creek Elementary, Fairway Elementary, Pine Meadow Elementary, Camp Easter Elementary, and Piney Woods Elementary. I would like to, uh, before I move on in this, I wanna notify the board and the superintendent that what is in the public, what is posted online for this executive summary was a previous version. On the next page, there was a, uh, accounting revision of the percentages, which are pulled up there now. So if you're reading off of a printout from earlier, it has been corrected to what is indicated on the screen right now. And I apologize for that. So if you look to the screen here now, you will see the results at the top that, whoa, you went too fast. Scroll down to the next page, right there. And so now if you look at the screen, uh, what you can see there is that we had opened a portal, pending approval from the board on November 5th, to allow respondents to indicate whether they support or don't support each of the proposed names and also the ability to provide a comment about why they're in support and not in support of the name. Among all the respondents who supported at least one of the options... Among all the respondents who supported at least one of the options, that means they voted for one of them and didn't say don't support to all of them. The, of the options, Camp Easter Elementary School received 60% approval. Approval levels for the remaining four options did range down from 39% to as low as 18% in support of. Camp Easter School was identified by those that responded online as their favorite among the four options that were presented. So at this point, we present this information to the board and Dr., or Mr. Locklear and I are requesting any further guidance from the board prior to your actions to be taken next week at the December 10th business meeting.
Well, I want to thank you and, and both of you for all the work that you've gone into this and the summary. It's really helpful to kind of go back to the summary. And I know, Ms. Thompson, just to help remind you on some of the key points and to bring you up to speed, although there's so much here, that we had 108 suggested names that we saw in October. And the names ranged really from, the list that we looked at in October had everything from names that were referencing topographical geographical features, names related to our prominent recreation, which is horses and golf here in, in Moore County. There were some names related to our growing military population and those connected to Fort Bragg. We had names related to our mission and also names related to individuals that were both living and had passed on who had contributed to our schools. And also in October, we referred to our policy of reserving our individual names for auxiliary facilities that honor individuals who've left a mark to the school. And we have a lot of examples of where gyms and tracks and playgrounds and other awards even have been given in that, in that area that have been really successful. We also talked about that, you know, putting these names out to the, the public just to sort of get their, their, the final five that we had that we talked about last month. The idea was that it was not a, necessarily a vote, that, that we're putting it out for a vote, but it was more just to get a sense for what the support was for any of these names and to identify if there were any, anything that we had missed in the research. And, and I will say that I know our communications department did a really good job in, in researching to make sure we didn't have any trademark issues, that there weren't any names that, that were put forth in this five that had any, any issues that we should be aware of in terms of naming schools. So I just wanted to make sure you had that summary and also give that to the public too, since, since there are folks that are watching online.
I, I was curious with the folks that responded to the portal, does it appear that that is reflective of our students that are going to be involved? I mean, do you, do you have a sense of, of what the response rate was or, or the numbers? I was just curious from the percentage, the overall approval rate?
The number, the number of.
Of response.
Now, previously, there were a lot of people that added, that'd be about a month ago where we had a lot of people that suggested names. This response was just to those five, the five finalists. There were those that, 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 you know, didn't vote for any of those and suggested some more, but that process was last month.
Okay.
So in this case, there was a high level of participation, but our task as a staff was to identify the public's response to the five that we put there. And so, does anybody have a number? I don't know that we had a.
I'd safely say there was a couple hundred.
Okay.
People who took the online.
That's right.
Survey of response.
Our, our task wasn't to, it wasn't an election, it wasn't.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So our task wasn't to, the board wasn't looking for us to report the election results because it wasn't, the board wasn't asking the public to vote on it. They were just looking for feedback on, on those particular names. Madam Chair?
Yeah, I was, what I was looking for was to make sure there was, wasn't anything, any red flags that we had missed. I mean, our communications department had done a very good job in, in doing that. And that was the, the purpose of that and just to get a flavor. And so our task now is to, next week, we're going to come back and we're going to vote on a name. And so if there are any questions or comments that you all have, this is a good time for us to have some dialogue.
I just want to thank you for the thorough process. I think the, the public has had plenty of opportunities to weigh in. It's important. It's, it's a long-term decision and looking forward to the discussion next week. Don't come in.
Any other comments?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission?
Okay.
Item E.
All right. This is the one that Dr. Grimace referred to earlier that we move on, following today's meeting tonight to the county commissioners request of funding. As introduced to the board previously, with the new Southern Pines Elementary School site, the challenges with that site is unique to the two that we currently have under construction, whereas Area 1 Elementary has very little grade change across the site and Aberdeen has almost none. This one has 80 feet. And so there's a significant amount of earthwork that needs to be done in order to be ready for construction in the school. We work in with the county manager's office, identified that an early site grading package ahead of the building would be appropriate here for a couple reasons. One, not only will it enable us to make sure we're staying on schedule with the construction of schools to remain in an opening position in August of 2020, but with construction cost escalations that we've been observing and discussing over the months, that to get ahead of anything and bid it sooner than later always has a good potential of saving money long-term on the projects. And so on November 29th, we received the bids for the early site grading package. We received five bids. The apparent low and responsive bid is from Sanford Contractors in the amount of $1,131,360.75. Sanford Contractors has been the site grading contractor for Area 1 Elementary and for Aberdeen. We believe that with the progress they made on Aberdeen and that they're near completion of the rough package out there, that they are in a great position, which is why they were the apparent load to just shift right over into this project. The anticipated budget for the LEA site package was 1.5 million, resulting in over $368,000 in savings right now on the project. It is our recommendation that this be awarded to Sanford Contracting and the amount is indicated. And the funds will come from a county capital fund and then be reimbursed to the county through their issuance of the general obligation bond. I am available to respond to any questions you may have regarding this.
I just had a comment. I'm certainly glad to see the savings of 368,000 because we'll need it with the anticipated additional expense for construction. It's gone up more than the 4% we had anticipated as we did these.
I was amazed at the variance between the four bids and happy that we had a little bit of this amount.
So am I.
Every time I drove by the Camp Easter site and I've been out Aberdeen several times, it's like a beehive of activity and bulldozers and trucks and people in orange t-shirts and so forth. And so, please, this, this would be the same, this would be the third project for that particular contractor.
For the site contractor.
Site, site contractor, yeah. They get the job done.
I'm happy to let them move on to all of them as long as they're the lowest responsible bidder.
They were low by a lot.
As long as they do a good job and save us money.
Low by a lot.
Well, there's some benefits of already having everything here.
I will advise the board that we are not planning on doing a groundbreaking for this process, but when the building bids, and that's the big part of line share of everything, we will conduct a groundbreaking ceremony for that because the site will have been rough graded, just like Aberdeen and Area 1 was when we conducted those. So as soon as we award that coming up in February, we'll be shortly doing the building groundbreaking ceremony at that time for the project.
How long will it take to do the grading?
We've been talking to them and they feel very confident about the first week of February, they'll have it done.
Oh, okay. Knock on wood, no snow.
Shh, don't even say that word.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, with your permission?
Yes.
Item F, Mr. Barath.
Item F is a similar routine that we present to the board regarding Area 1 Elementary, same thing for Aberdeen Elementary. And we'll do this eventually for Southern Pines Elementary. And that is, we need a blanket electrical easement that permits the power company being due progress to install the power to the transformer that will serve the school as well as power for the lighting poles and the ability to maintain the power for the school and the service of the power poles. This agreement is the same as presented to the board for Area 1 Elementary School. It's been reviewed with legal counsel. And legal counsel and I both believe that the agreement will pose no undue restrictions to the board and will pose no risk to the project budget or timeline. And if there's any questions, I'm available to respond.
Any questions?
No delay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get you out in time?
Plenty of time.
Actually, plenty of time. We're doing, we're doing very well. Doing very well. Welcome, Mr. Locklear and Ms. Fall.
Yes, sir.
Or I should say, welcome back. And I'm not going to say who's going to be on for the next group of items because you'll probably have something to do with it, but we'll have a rotation going on here.
We will. Rotation from the team as we come through the following items.
Item G, Mr. Locklear.
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, board, good evening again. Thank you, Dr. Grimace. Kate is going to lead us through our information and our process around how we make sure we're verifying our K-3 class size that's required by the law. And you can see from the executive summary, there's a chart there that shows us what the law requires us this year in K-3 for our class sizes to be. Kindergarten through third grade, there's a max individual class size of one to 20, excuse me, a max district average of one to 20 and individual class size of one to 23. The law that was revised last, earlier, late last winter takes a phasing approach to the full implementation of the class size law. In 21, 22, we will have full implementation of class size law, which requires individual class size maxes of 18 in kindergarten, 16 in first grade, 17 in second and third grade. So we'll phasing into that, that maximum over the next few years. The law requires that each LEA superintendent biannually sign an affidavit. And that's what we're sharing with you tonight is our process and asking for your endorsement of that process and affidavit. The LEA superintendent is required biannually to sign and submit an affidavit attesting to the class sizes that his or her district has submitted and that the district is in compliance with those class sizes with the best of his or her knowledge. If the state decides that the district LEA is out of compliance and the superintendent has not done all he or she can to rectify it, the state can withhold funds for the superintendent's salary. And that's why, again, we think it's important for you to see our process and to help us verify that process as we submit it to the state in the coming days. So I'm going to ask Kate if she can review our processes a little bit with you.
In addition to the affidavit that the superintendent must sign, there's also a fall and spring class sized report that is done in Power School. The fall report was originally due December 1st, but it was recently extended to December 15th. The class size report is actually a series of four and a half reports. It's a class size report which shows the, all, all classes and all enrollments for all schools, regardless of whether or not they serve K-3. There's an enhancement teacher report which shows all enhancement teachers at a school regardless of whether or not they're K-3. There's an exceptions report which shows any class that is not in compliance with the class size law. There's a K-3 average class size which shows the school's average class size. And then in addition to that, there's an LEA level report which shows the district's overall class size for each grade level. These reports continue to have known errors, including the LEA class size report, which is not reporting correctly. We followed all guidelines that have been given to us by the Department of Public Instruction to resolve these issues, how, and many of them have been resolved. However, last Tuesday, the PAR department did a detailed data validation of three schools. We found that the class size report, the one that lists all the classes and the enrollments, and the K-3 average class size reports were incorrect. Additionally, the LEA class size average report is not accurate and we have been told that the issue will be resolved, but the report will not be remedied prior to the submission date. At our last home base meeting, we were advised to report all errors to Department of Public Instruction, which we have done, and that we should submit the reports as, as are and apply, the statistics will be applied to the spring reporting. Moore County Schools has built teacher allotment process to ensure compliance with this law. We've also instituted systems, processes, and tools which we institute on a bi-monthly basis to continually monitor our class sizes throughout the summer and now throughout the school year. As of November 27th, our average K-3 class size was 17.39 and our average K-3 ELA class size, which is what the Power School reporting is based off of, is 16.45. And while these numbers seem low, it is important to note that there are several classes with a ratio of one to one and one to two. Most of these classes are exceptional education classes in K-2 where students have not yet been identified as self-contained, even though they may be served in a self-contained classroom. Their course code is not a self-contained classroom. And so they're included in that calculation. These low ratios are pulling our class size average down. If you remove these classes from the equation, our class size averages in actuality jump to 19.23 for all K-3 class sizes and 19.04 for all K-3 ELA classes, which is what again is being based off in those Power School reports. While the legislative class size reports are still, have significant errors, we in the PAR department and the academic and student support services department are confident through the use of our own validation tools and processes that we are in compliance with the law and we do not need to submit any waivers as we are not over the limit in any core classes.
So again, I want to commend Kate's leadership, her department's leadership, being so thorough to develop the systems and processes. And we're certainly here answering questions you may have and also offer up the potential to endorse this at your December 10th regular business meeting.
Yeah, my, I had a question. I was under, understanding that we could only go two, two students over per class, per max class size.
According to the, the compromise law, I think it's House Bill 90, if I remember correctly, the compromise law phases that in over a period of time. This year, our max, as is in the chart, we had a max individual class size of one to 23, which kept the same ratio that we had last year and a district average of one to 20, which we're well within compliance of that. Next year, that drops one. Next year, we have a max individual class size of one to 22 and a district average of one to 19. And then that phases into 21, 22, where you have to be at the funded level for your district average. Can't be over three in the individual class. So for example, in 21, 22, kindergarten could be one to 21 in an individual class size max as long as your district average is at the funded level.
Okay, so the class size doesn't really matter that much. It's the average that counts.
The district average that the state is monitoring you on. And the individual class, they, they, their report throws out exceptions. If you're over that individual class average, it shows that in the exception report. We have to report on it, either apply for a waiver or fix it.
Okay.
That's what the law requires.
I've got to change my Excel formula.
Kate can help you with that.
Which is going to help us though because it's going to show what it's going to do. It's going to be worse. Okay.
Did I understand, you said that they're requiring in the class size report, a report of all of the schools' classes?
They are requiring for the first two, the one that lists all class sizes and their enrollments and for the enhancement teacher list. That is being completed by all 23 of our schools. All schools, even if they don't serve K-3, have that list on it, yes.
And what is the purpose of Power School if the state can't access information without asking for additional reports?
Great question.
It's a great question. I do not have an answer for.
It's never worked. It, it would seem to me that they, I'm sure there's someone in Raleigh who's the expert on Power School, that there should be a way that they could just routinely do unexpected checks on a school system and see what class enrollments appear to be.
It's actually standard practice within Power School for, even, even though the reports, they can pull them at any time. There's a, for example, there's a report called the School Activities Report, which can pull that information anytime. It's standard practice for the schools to verify and validate that that information is correct and that it's pulling correct. So the practice of having the report, pulling the report, validating the report, and then submitting the report is actually common practice within Power School. The issue we're having is that they have issues that they're not able to resolve for us in a timely enough manner for us to meet the deadline.
And so one other question. How close, based on your predictions from last spring as to what our kindergarten enrollment and, well, K-32 enrollment was going to be, how close have we remained on the numbers?
Pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, we've, we've been relatively close. There's been some schools where the number's been a little bit higher or lower, but overall, we've actually been pretty good with our projections for kindergarten enrollments. We use three-year average for kindergarten enrollment and we also compare that to the five-year average and those are very similar. So while you might have a class that's very, very large one year and very, very small the next, we do, using that three-year average for a projection has helped us stay pretty close to where we should be.
Well, it's good to have a methodology in place that you can replicate from year to year. So, good.
And we look forward to bringing you our projections in January.
Already.
For the next school year.
And at that time, will we be able to provide the board with a report on the impact on grades four through 12 that required us to migrate positions to K through three?
Part of our reporting. Yes, sir. Part of our reporting will be about. Part of our reporting, yes, sir. Part of our reporting will be about those class size ranges and impact in grades four, 12 as well.
Very important to understand, because no politician can claim that they lowered the class sizes. They lowered class sizes in K-3, but they increased class sizes in four through 12, and, and there's no denying that. Anybody who doesn't fully disclose that in their campaign materials is misleading the public.
This is another case with them, because they're only giving the allotment for the 18, 16, 17, 18. So another case of a change they can make by giving us a little flexibility that won't cost them a cent, that'll save millions of dollars for all the schools that they're going to need for capital.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
On that happy note.
Well, and the class sizes in the upper levels, I think, is really critical. And it's something that, you know, you hear from teachers and, and parents even, the, the difficulty in having those larger class sizes in middle and high school, and you've got bigger bodies in there, too. And, and there's just not, I'm wondering if legislatively, we need to be thinking about advocating for them to put limits on the upper levels as well. I don't know if that's how you do it, but we have to, funding it. They have to fund it.
They have an allocation for upper levels, don't they?
No.
Well, they haven't, they have, yeah.
But they don't have a, they don't have a class size.
Right, they don't have a cap.
No cap, no, sir.
No cap.
Just think our test scores may...
It'd be nice, but we have more board than somebody.
Actually get better.
Get better if we had lower class sizes.
In the upper grades.
In upper grades, yes.
With your permission, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Item H.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to stand in for Director of Critical Instruction, Bridget Johnson, who sits this evening. But Michelle Gray, I believe, is in the back. If we have any questions. Michelle, come on and join us, just in case there's questions.
Come on down, Michelle.
I know she really appreciates that, but come, come on, Michelle. Join us at the table real quick. But this is something you've seen before. We're required each year to get our Beginning Teacher Support Plan approved by the board. It's required by board policy, state board policy, and general statute. And there's some revisions that we put forth this year as a result of some revised state board policy. But Michelle has done a great job leading our Beginning Teacher Support Program. That includes working with some expert retired teacher, who, teachers who work with our Beginning Teachers and support them, support our mentors and support their work. It also includes a, a great new teacher, Beginning Teacher orientation that we've continued to refine and had a great one this year as well, and we continue to look at that. We also look at data like a teacher working conditions survey report that they break out by Beginning Teachers. So we look at that data, too. So Michelle's just done a great job of leading that program, and Bridget Johnson as well. But we bring to you that reduced revision for your endorsement, which is required by state board policy. Open to any questions.
I'm just thankful to see the level of resources that we put into that, and I'm glad that your time has been freed up to do more of that because our new teachers need guidance, not only from mentors, but from somebody from a district level looking at what they all need together. So thank you for that.
My pleasure.
It wasn't on here, I know it's not part of the plan, but I'm curious as to the, from last year to this year, the number of beginning teachers that we've kept. And I know, I'm, I'm not asking for the information right now, but I, I, because I think this is such a good plan that I, I want to, I want, I'm, I'm hoping that we're seeing success of maintaining the same teachers over and over again.
Retention.
Yes.
So off the top of my head, I can only think of a handful that we've lost.
And a lot, I mean, we're always going to have a handful, at least.
Due to moving and family situations, so.
That's good to hear.
Absolutely.
I think we have a history of training people, too, a lot better than the other districts, and the other districts end up taking them away.
Yeah, we, we're, we're often struggling as to how much we cram into work sessions, and so that's why we have the monthly update. Tim, have we had, or perhaps Dr. Alvin Phillips, has there been a, I couldn't recall in November if we had a report on the teacher turnover report?
No, sir. I don't know if it's been released yet. Yeah, I don't think it has.
Hasn't been released. Usually, it's a November release, so. Imagine that. Yeah, DPI report, getting a little bit later every year. That's right. Yeah, better do it on time. And, and as, board members, as soon as that report comes out, that would provide you with that information, and, and then in the body of the narrative, perhaps we can just include some comparisons with Beginning Teachers over the last couple of years. We'll do that. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Any other questions for Michelle and Mr. Lachlaire? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lachlaire is going to sit down, and he's going to let Mr. Eklund come up by himself. Okay. We'll read nothing into that. I didn't think this was going to be controversial, but now I'm a little worried. Go ahead, Kent. Let's see how this goes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm developing it.
I do my best. Good afternoon, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, current members of the school board and new members of the school board. The information in, in front of you regards the refresh and renewal of our internet security appliance. Obviously, it's a very important piece of hardware for securing the internet here in the district. This year, we normally have a renewal cost of approximately $43,000 for the support and the threat prevention subscriptions. Due to advances in processor technology, the vendor now offers higher performance hardware at a lower cost, both a lower initial hardware cost, but also a significantly lower recurring cost for the support and the threat prevention. Even though this year, we would, we would pay to, to refresh with a new piece of hardware slightly more at $52,000, we would realize the savings over three years of over $49,000, and over five years, which would be the expected lifetime of the device, of over $100,000. So I seek your approval for the, the refresh of this device with, with a new piece of hardware rather than continuing with the current support agreement.
Can you just explain to me, and I, I might be just missing it, that the estimated cost is $123,000?
That's the total cost over five years.
Over five years, thank you. That's what I was missing.
And we might want to, if, excuse me, Dr. Brown, if I could, Kent, when we update this executive summary for next week, let's be explicit with that in that, in that line there.
I'm just curious as to, okay, we've got the same level of performance. If, if we paid more, would we get better performance somewhere? I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Well, it, it's, we, we've sized the device to, to cover both the current needs and also our expected increased internet needs over the next five years. It's, it potentially, right now, we only have a two-gig connection to the internet, but we expect that to go up to four, you know, four, eight.
That's what I was wondering.
MCNC, thankfully, the state organization will, as we use more internet traffic, they just make our pipe bigger and bigger at no cost to us.
That, that was part of my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nothing else?
Thank you. Well done, Kent.
Thank you.
And at this time, we've got Dr. Powers coming forth for item J.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Thompson. So at your October 29th work session, the board gave its endorsement to seek parent community feedback on possible administration of a social-emotional learning survey to all of our students in grades three through 12. In, in seeking that community feedback, what we did was we created a link on Moore County Schools webpage to allow parents to go on, see information related to what the social-emotional learning survey was, as well as to see what the specific questions were related to both the grades three through five and six through 12 questions of students. We also allowed parents to be, to have a spot where they could provide feedback online as well. After doing that, principals either send a connect, a connective message prior to November 4th to all grades three through 12 parents, making them aware of the opportunity to learn more about the survey, review the questions, and then provide feedback during the timeframe of November 6th through 15th. Parents were also made aware that hard, hard copies were available in the school office, as well as here at the central office and the Office for Student Support Services, and their feedback could be provided to either our office or the school principal. As of the end of that time period, November 15th, we received no feedback related to the administration of the social-emotional learning survey. So with no negative feedback at this time, we are seeking the board's endorsement to move forward and administer the SEO survey to all grades three through 12 students in January of this year.
Seth, I just have one question. Even though there were no responses, will the parents still have an opportunity to opt out if they so choose?
They do have the opportunity to opt out, and they do that by sending that request in writing to their school principal.
When would you expect to have the data available for review?
We will have that data probably within a month or so following. We'll be giving this through Panorama, so they'll be providing that. They'll be pulling all that data together and providing it back to us in, in a form that will be very easy for us to be able to share with our schools as well as the board.
So it could inform, it could inform us for programming for next year.
Absolutely.
In terms of how we approach certain things at different schools.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. What are we going to do with this information when it?
Yes, so we'll, and part of the reason for administering the survey, as you know, as we, we took the Youth Risk Behavior Survey last year and found some areas where we were, you know, needed some additional support, particularly related to students, some of their mental health, behavioral health needs. We feel like the, some of the things that we'll learn through the social-emotional learning survey will help us to support those areas and, and better target students in specific strategies to help support those needs. So that's our, that's the thought and idea to improve in those areas, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item, item K, Dr. Metcalf.
2021 calendar. As you're aware, we have a standard calendar, standing calendar committee made up of parents, teachers, principals, and central office staff. Committee has met several times, reviewed state and district policy, and looked at multiple calendar options. Committee has developed a proposed 2020-21 calendar, and as per policy 5031, we request your authorization to post this proposed calendar to the school's website for feedback. Feedback will be anonymous. It'll be available for input from December 11th, 2018 until January 10th, 2019. We'll compile the feedback for the board's review at its February 4th, 2019 work session, along with a recommendation for calendar adoption. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks for using bright colors.
You're welcome.
It does help.
And I, I noticed that we're in the 2020 year now, and I, I know we had talked about last year making sure that Election Day in the even-numbered years, in November, we were closed. And I can't even believe we're thinking about that two years from now, but.
That's correct.
I think that's, that's good, that it falls within the first, end of the first grading period and, and conferences as well. Great.
And again, the, the, we're asking the board to endorse it merely for pushing it out to the public for one month of comment.
Right. We'll be back at the February meeting for adoption, along with the feedback.
I'm glad you're doing it early. People plan their vacations.
They do.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll invite Dr. Powers back. It occurs to me that we had Dr. Powers for item J, item 11L, and item N, which means he sits, he stands, he sits, he stands, he sits, he stands. Everything we can do to keep him fit. Dr. Powers.
Yes, sir. Army Youth Programs in Your Neighborhood, also known as AYPYN, is a Department of the Army initiative to provide after-school and mentoring support to active-duty students in school systems supporting military installations. So Moore County Schools is a program participant, you know, due to our proximity to Fort Bragg and the number of military families and students that we have in our district. We, we're contracted through the Department of Defense for up to $100,000 per year to engage 100 students per day district-wide across six campuses. So only, only secondary schools are eligible to participate, and the only secondary schools in areas one and three have enough of a military population to support the program here in our district. So the schools that participate include both Pinecrest and Union Pines High Schools, West Pine Middle, Southern Middle, Cranes Creek Middle, and New Century Middle. Funding received through AYPYN is distributed to participating schools to support after-school activities other than athletics. Athletics does not qualify. That involve active-duty military students, but it's not limited to military-related students. Funding varies based on the number of active-duty students participating at individual schools. Moore County Schools recently completed a four-year AYPYN contract and, and has now renewed that contract through 2022. The contract allows for site coordinators to be paid to manage the program on each campus. So in order to standardize compensation for coordinators, fund accountability for attendance goals, tracking of active-duty participation in school, in after-school activities, and to increase participation in the program, we propose creating a stipend to pay each individual school AYPYN coordinator in the following amounts. For middle school, we propose $1,250 per year, and at the high school, we propose $2,500 a year. These amounts were established through collaboration with both our school principals and our finance department, taking into consideration the time spent weekly by coordinators to oversee the, the program work, as well as what will be appropriate compensation. So the stipends will be paid in two equal amounts in January and June of each year, and the stipend would only be in effect as long as Moore County Schools continues to have an AYPYN contract with the Department of Defense.
And Dr. Pa, and Madam Chair, if I could add to Dr. Powers' remarks. The reason for this recommendation is the board's practice of approving any, the creation of any new positions or stipends. And so you would not normally hear about this after you approve this. This is just to establish these stipends. And so it's our obligation to let you know what the revenue source for that will be. And I'm, I'm very pleased that we're doing this because it's going to build consistency into our programs. Right now, you know, we've got the money, but from one school to the next, the fidelity of the program really varies. And so once we offer the stipend, we think we can have more consistent fidelity across all of our schools.
And I'll also add, if we're able to build participation, the contract can be for more than $100,000. So if we were to see our participation increase, we could always go back and seek to rework the contract and gain more funds for our schools.
Do I understand, does the Army pay their base pay for these, for these coordinators?
The, the funding would come from that AYPYN funding, yes.
We get a lump sum, and we're choosing to use some of that money for these stipends the same way that we use some of our federal impact aid money for our military liaison.
I guess my question is, do we pay their salaries?
Yes, we do, but we use that as our revenue source.
Okay.
I'm assuming would these be mainly guidance counselors?
No. It's different, different schools, but it's, it's, it's a school staff member.
What, what do we use the rest of that $100,000 for?
It's divided up, and it goes to the schools based on the number of students that they have. So it's, it's different for, for every school, depending on how many active-duty students they have participating.
In particular activities. I just know that when I was coaching debate, I went for several years where I had to turn in the number of every-day practice, and how many were military kids, how many were not.
That goes toward that.
We didn't see any money out of it.
Well, there's record-keeping, and each school, each school determines how they distribute that. And it, it also depends on, too, some activities, clubs may have more military-related students than them others, but it is a school-based decision.
How many coordinators do we have? We have one at each one of those schools.
Yes, sir.
So we're paying those out of the $100,000, so.
Well, but they're, they're, they have another, they have a primary responsibility first, correct? They're a teacher or a counselor or whatever.
These are after-school programs.
So the $100,000 is just for their stipends plus the different activity needs for each school to support these kids. So some, some of them have their own room, right? I mean, they, if there's room, a lounge or something.
They do.
Or they can meet and talk with their counselor, and it looks very different.
And also, they have foosball, and, and they've got some different activities in there. And it's not just limited to military children. I mean, other kids can come with them. But the intention of it is to make sure there's a place or activities for, for military-connected children after school. If we don't do that, we lose the money, so it's.
Correct.
Obviously, I mean, we want, we, we want to put the money to good use, and, and having a coordinator do that could make a difference. I'd love to see some of the, maybe, maybe a report at some point on what kind of programs are being offered in these after-school programs.
Like a program highlight?
A program highlight, possibly, yes.
And it is, and these, you know, basically what it is, is after-school programs that are already going on at the schools, you're tracking your number of military-related students who are participating in those programs, and we receive our funding based on how many of those children are. So it could be that new programs or new after-school activities might be created, but for the most part, it's how many military-related children you have participating in what you have going on, or, you know, other things that you choose to do. I know we have some schools that may do after-school trips for military-related students that may go to see a play or go to see a, you know, maybe a, a hockey game in Raleigh or something to that effect. But more or less, you're, you're doing things to keep those students engaged after school.
And student-to-student, junior, student-to-student program. And student-to-student, junior, student-to-student programs, they support that. So they, they can help with other activities, but first and foremost, we've got to make sure that there's direct support for our military-connected students.
Looks like we're making good use of that funding.
Yeah, and perhaps we could do a program highlight, or very least, provide a report in our monthly update, and then see where we might go with that. Because there's a lot, there's really a lot to how we use our impact aid money and our AEPN money. Any other questions?
And the thought here, just like impact aid, having someone to coordinate it and use it helps that us to get more money.
Obviously, we've benefited greatly, and those individuals also can, can encourage everyone to report on, you know, how many military children participate in activities in order to maximize our funds. So, Dr. Powers, can we leave it up to you to make sure that, and maybe the December update next month, maybe we could do something in there?
Sure.
Thank you.
January, he said December.
Yeah, we don't have an update in December. It's January, right?
I saw him sweat a little bit when he said that.
Thank you, Dr. Powers.
At this time, we've got Ms. Dixon, item M.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy, and members of the board. State law 115(c) dash 170 requires each local Board of Education to be assisted by a business advisory council in an effort to identify economic and workforce development trends related to training and educational needs from the local community. Due to recent vacancies and in an effort to expand our representation on behalf of our middle schools with all of our work that we're doing there, we have had several nominations for our business advisory council, and I am presenting those to you for your consideration on behalf of the council. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
And the names are included in the text?
Do you want me to?
No, does anybody have any questions?
I do not. Looks good.
I just want to say Nathaniel Peterkin, who is one of your names, is a former member of the Pinecrest Speech and Debate Team.
Nice plug there. Any questions?
And board members are invited to attend the business advisory council meetings.
We actually have one this week on the sixth, at noon at Union Pines. Will be hosting us this time. So if you can join us for lunch in the meeting, we will.
Taking a tour of the horticulture program?
Well, we're happy to see that there are members in the community that want to be involved.
Yes, it's exciting.
Let Sonya know. If any of you have the time to join us, starts at noon.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and if you have a chance, it'd be good to just expose yourself to that at some point, just to see what's going on. It's a pretty energetic group.
It is, and growing. I were excited.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, as we continue his fitness ritual, Dr. Powers will return.
You wearing a Fitbit today?
We have three out-of-state field trips for your consideration this month. The first from Pinecrest High School for their senior Air Force Junior ROTC to travel to Washington DC as a capstone event. The second, for Southern Middle School students to travel to Williamsburg, Virginia to participate in the Fiesta Ball music competition at Busch Gardens. That trip is in March 29th through 30th. Pinecrest trip is March 7th through 10th. And finally, New Century Middle School requesting permission to travel for their sixth grade to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to visit medieval times, which is a trip that does align to stand content standards for the sixth grade social studies curriculum.
A quick question. In regard to something that was posted on social media recently that indicated that students who couldn't afford it didn't go on school field trips. It's my understanding, and based on the applications, every trip we approve makes accommodations for students who cannot afford it. So that no one, no child is left behind, so to speak.
That is absolutely correct, and you're exactly right. Each time that an out-of-state field trip is requested, a part of the form that those, the teachers fill out, the principal approves, is they do state how will they accommodate students who may not be able to afford to go on the trip. Because we would not, we would not leave a student out based on their inability to pay.
And if someone says they have an anecdote that would prove that otherwise, they should call your office?
They certainly may.
And a lot of it is the parents approving the child going first, right?
Absolutely. And there are, there are times when the parents may choose not to have their child participate, but it would not be because they could not afford it.
Any questions about the field trips?
Madam Chairman, the administration rests in its presentation of items for your consideration, and now we await the board's direction on how you would like to structure your consent items and your board action items for your meeting on December 10th.
So if we look under today's agenda for pending action and discussion, so items under six, which of these items should we pull out for pending action for the?
Well, for board, might be, if you look at the ones you want for board action, it might be easier.
Right, so I would, I would propose that the student assignment plan and the name of the new elementary school would be two, that we would pull out for board action, and the rest be on consent.
What about?
Is that good? C and D? You got that, Sonya? C and D, C and D.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, board comments is the last item. I'll start with you. I don't want to start with Ms. Thompson. Her first day back.
I'm very pleased that we encourage all of our students to aim high in Moore County, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's on the athletic field, or the stage, or anything else. And over the last week or so, I've had the opportunity and the privilege to enjoy seeing the scope of the, of the achievement and success that our students can, can accomplish. They can get themselves to Broadway. If they work hard and have talent, they can get themselves to the Final Four prestigious athletic event. They can get themselves to Fairfax, Virginia. And it just feels good to see kids succeed and gain in self-confidence. And, and they enjoy it. We had a lot of singing on the bus last night from 10 o'clock until four this morning, coming home from George Mason University, but it was just thrilling. Bradley Gibson was fabulous, and I'll, I'll be sitting in Wallace Wade Stadium on Friday.
Is it in Wallace Wade Stadium?
Wake Forest High School.
Wake Forest High School.
Whoa.
We have to win one more before we get to.
I look forward to sitting in Wallace Wade Stadium. That's what I said.
Wallace Wade, you'll be at the next week after that.
Wake Forest High School?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
And there are some specific parking instructions that I have seen running around on social media, so maybe I'll make sure to get that to everyone.
And are tickets available in advance?
Yes, I think I saw that too.
We can work on that. We, you'll, pardon me, but if you'll communicate with Sonya if you would like to go, Seth, we can work with the AD of Pinecrest, Coach Hewitt, since they can put your names at the gate, perhaps we could accommodate you in that process.
We just want to make, no, we'll buy them ourselves. It's just being able to, making sure that we buy them in advance so we don't get turned away.
Make sure we work through that.
Can they be accommodated at the gate for state playoffs?
I believe you can.
It's exciting.
I don't think so, but a lot of times a high school will sell in advance so that you don't have to stand in line at the gate.
Either way, we'll, we can work on that. If you let Sonya know if you plan to go, we'll work through it.
Tell you what, could we just issue an advisory to the board tomorrow that they can respond to? Where we've got information about parking and tickets, and just kind of have it there for them, and then they can just react and say what their needs might be? If we could do that sometime tomorrow, maybe Jeff could help us put something together. That'd be okay?
Well, I did see a parking instructions, a pretty comprehensive one on social media today, so it's there.
And it's north of Raleigh in an hour and 38-minute drive.
Look at you, Ed.
Which time of day?
But it's not at the university in Winston-Salem, huh?
Exciting. Dr. Brown?
I'm just excited for this next year with our returning board members of Ed and Libby, and returning another time of Pam. I think we've got to have an excellent team put together again. I thank the voters for endorsing and supporting our school board and all that we do.
I did talk to Dell Falwell, State Treasurer. He said that the fines and forfeiture, the 700-plus million dollars, is a General Assembly responsibility decision to make. Talked to Tom McInnes, and he's not interested in any chairing or vice-chairing any school committee because he says he has his hands full with transportation, which he chairs.
Do you want me to go since I see she has a little thing going on? I, I really don't have much. I just wanted to welcome you. I'm so glad I have a partner over here. I'm not lonely, and, and I also wanted to mention December 15th, First Annual VAS parade. And a lot of the schools are going to be, I think Union Pines is going to be there. Yes, and it's at 11 o'clock. So if you guys can make it, that'd be great. It's their first annual, so.
And where's it kicking off?
It's going to be, I'm, when you said that, it's, VAS isn't very big, but I don't mean that in any way. My face got red on that one. But, yeah, it's kind of hard to explain. I think it's going to be, start off near the police station, but it does go around that, that circle, and it's online too. Sorry.
And what time of day?
11 o'clock.
Saturday.
Oh, no, 15th, 15th.
Isn't that a Saturday?
Yeah, I thought you said this Saturday.
No, 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 a Saturday.
Yes.
All right, now.
Now me. Madam Chair, I just would like to take this opportunity to first thank the community for their support through the election. Being elected was just overwhelming and delightful. So I just appreciate the support. Also, appreciate the support of board members, Dr. Bob, and administrative team for just graciously accepting me back and already have had a full day of orientation with lots of time from everyone, trying to get up to speed. But I'm just so thankful, and I feel just so privileged and honored to be a member of the Moore County Board of Education. Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Glad to have you. Thank you for serving.
Thanks.
Ms. Carter?
Well, we'll be making some important decisions next week, so it will be good to hear input from anyone who still has it to give, and to folks who might join us for the meeting. But it will be wonderful to finally put a name on a school and decide which students are going to be the lucky ones who get to attend it.
Yeah. And I just wanted to thank everyone on the board for your confidence in me and in Libby as well in terms of returning as chair and vice-chair. And last year, you all know what a busy year that was. It was breakneck speed in terms of the two initiatives that were on the ballot. Just really exciting to see how the community came together for that and how you all really supported that as well, and all the work that you did, and talking to the community members, and being at the polls, and, and just being real advocates for the public schools here in Moore County. And all the work that you did was really phenomenal, so it was a great year. I will say that this year is going to continue to be hard. We have a lot of work to do, exciting work with the new schools, and being able to do some more groundbreaking, and, and all of that is very exciting. But there's also going to be some challenges. I think we have to be aware of that. You know, we have to look at our, looking at our phase two of school reassignment and really think about how we're going to balance utilization and our performance grades within the schools, how we're going to approach that. As we have heard over the past several months, that this phase two is really going to look at the whole county. And that's going to take a lot of real heavy thinking and participation by all of us in the community to make sure that we do this right. We have a significant opportunity to do some real important work, and it's not going to be easy. We also still have budget issues, as you all know. I mean, they never go away. I think this is our first full year, I guess, without, we'll have managed to a year without a fund balance. So now this is the first full year having experience of managing to life without a fund balance, to creating a new budget. And there are some, some things that we have to look at, both operationally and obviously with staffing, making sure that we have the right amount of staff, and also supporting all the building that we're doing. And, you know, and I look forward to doing it all. We'll do it with a smile. We'll, we'll work hard. We'll, we'll roll up our sleeves, and I know it'll be easy, won't be easy. And I also know that we have to sort of realize where we are with social media. You know, social media is alerting us sometimes to things that are, that are coming up that we need to pay attention to. We need to weigh that against other things that we have to pay attention to. And I know that, you know, in the coming weeks and months, we'll be looking at some additional things with our transportation, with, with our lunch process, and really taking a look at what, what we've heard and how we want to go ahead and make some changes and make some improvements in that. So important work. It's easy to blame legislation. It's really easy to blame the lack of funding, but sometimes we just have to figure it out and do what's right for our kids and make sure that we have the right resources in the right place to do what we need to do. With that, the last thing I want to leave you with is that we have to look at committee assignments. So think about any changes to the current committees that you're on and what, what areas you're interested in and want to be a part of in the coming year. We'll work on that as well. So just reach out to me or Vice Chair Libby and let us know what your thoughts are on that. That's all I have.
And Chair.
Oh, I knew you would come in with that one.
Remove the meeting, be adjourned.
Are there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? We'll see you next week.
He's been awake all night. That's great, Ruth.